This is the Tuesday, March 15th, meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shor, serving as Chair this year. To my left is our Vice Chair, Chris Yocum, and to my right, Roma Amundson and Sean Flowerday. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda number one or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on March 8th, 2022.
I move approval of the minutes. Second. Any comments or corrections? Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims, approval of all claims processed through March 15th, 2022. This needs to be amended to include payroll ending on March 9th, 2022.
I move the approval of all the claims processed through March 15th to be amended to include the pay period through March 9th.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three are consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of. Amendment to County Contract C-21-234 with WatchGuard Video, Inc., assigning rights and obligations to Motorola Solutions, Inc. for public safety video equipment. Right-of-way contracts with the following. Ronald W. and Linda E. McGill, North 176th Street and Davina Road, in amount of $1,279. Dennis L. and Regina R. Frankie, South 120th Street and A Street, in amount of $1,695. Received and placed on file, the report from records and information management for February 2022.
I move approval of the consent items. Second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number four is new business. 4A is proclaiming March 25th, 2022 as 4H Achievement Day.
Right. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. I'll take this off because it steams up sometimes. So, good morning. I'm Karen Wobig, and with me today Tracy Anderson, who you'll hear from, and then over there is Vicki Jedlica. We appreciate her always capturing every event that we have. But we're here today to ask you to claim or proclaim March 25th as 4H Achievement Day this year. So, we're a little bit later than we usually have this, but had to do some canceling here earlier in the year. So, before Tracy speaks, I just want to once again thank you for the support that you give to extension in general, but particularly 4H, because it definitely makes a difference. And I know that isn't always visible out there, but in the world we live in these days, having that connection maybe to a club, to animals, to, you know, something, it makes a huge difference for youth. And we feel pretty strongly that we're helping youth. And most of that, of course, comes from the 4H staff. So, Tracy?
Well, good morning. Again, I'm Tracy Anderson. I'm the Extension Educator and the Coordinator for the Lancaster County Program focusing on 4H. And I do want to thank you for your support. Because of your support, in 2021, we were able to reach 19,000 youth. And, you know, COVID did require us to do some reimagining again, you know? But we had to postpone a few things, such as this 4H Achievement Event. But all in all, we've been able to continue our programming through 4H Clubs, School Enrichment. I know I've mentioned this like every time, but we reach all third graders in Lancaster County with the Embryology Program alone. And that means like Malcolm Waverly, I mean, it's every, every school there, as well as Prokial Schools, too. And with your support, you're really empowering young people to succeed and be contributing citizens when they become adults. So, it really is helpful. So, thank you again, and thank you for proclaiming March 25th as 4H Achievement Celebration Day.
Mr. Clerk, would you like to read that proclamation into the record?
Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization with nearly 6 million youth participants. And whereas 4H in Lancaster County engages nearly 25,000 youth through clubs, school enrichment, and after-school programs, and is supported by nearly 1,700 volunteers. Whereas 4H provides an opportunity for all young people and helps them get equal access to resources they need to thrive. Whereas 4H provides young people with community mentors and learning opportunities to develop the skills they need to create positive change in their lives and communities. And whereas Lancaster County 4H is delivered by the University of Nebraska-Lincoln Extension in cooperation with Lancaster County Government. Now therefore, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March 25th, 2022 as 4H Achievement Day, and encourages residents of our community to learn more about the achievements of youth as part of the Lancaster County 4H Youth Development Program. This is by the Board of Commissioners of Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Thank you. Roma?
Yeah, and I just would like to mention one thing. You know, you start talking, this is not necessarily only the 4H, although you're talking about contacting 19,000 kids. But you know, am I correct in saying that your website with the embryology sort of thing, that goes worldwide?
That is correct. Do you want to speak to that? Yeah, that is correct. And I don't know if you've ever had a chance to see our 4H Egg Cam, but it's very, very educational, very exciting. Kids just kind of shriek when they see it, because it's, I mean, it's life, right? I mean, it's like, it's happening, and it makes a huge impact. We've received comments from different countries across the world for, oh, gosh, that started with Sony even back, probably 15, 18 years ago. So, that's a long time.
Yeah. And the other thing, too, you know, I think that, isn't Lancaster County Extension one of the largest ones in Nebraska?
Yeah, Lancaster County has the largest 4H program in Nebraska.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for, please extend it to the entire staff. We really appreciate what you all do.
And we can't let it go by without thanking the many volunteers that make the programs possible. Parents and all the other community leaders that step forward and make it possible, so.
Well, I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
4B is a resolution in the matter of recognizing March 21st through the 25th, 2022, as Severe Weather Awareness Week. And April 16th, 2022, is Storm Spotter Appreciation Day.
Good morning. Jim David, Sabre Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. The National Weather Service has always recognized the third week of March as Severe Weather Awareness Week. It's kind of been compromised the last couple of years due to the COVID restrictions. So, we're going to participate in the statewide tornado drill next Wednesday morning, so be ready for that. The other thing, we are able to host the in-person storm spotter certification training for the first time since 2019. So, the National Weather Service and the Lincoln Amateur Radio Club are always huge partners in that. And the Lincoln Amateur Radio Club has a new facility. Well, it's new to them. It's the old work release facility in Air Park. They have taken that over as their clubhouse, so to speak. They've done a lot of renovations just over the past few weeks. And we've got a couple of weeks before the spotter awareness training is coming up on April 16th, but we will certainly take advantage of that opportunity to host the in-person training.
Well, that is just, that's just really a marvelous thing. Again, you know, we speak about volunteers, you know? And again, this is a volunteer effort, you know, in terms of the radio as well as the storm spotters. And, yeah, we do need to know about severe weather. Thank you for what you do.
Move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Do you want me to read this, Deb?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Please do.
Whereas Lancaster County and the city of Lincoln are acutely aware of the need for public education relating to severe weather. Whereas the importance of public awareness and education are key elements for a better understanding of those characteristics associated with severe weather. Whereas March 21st through the 25th, 2022, has been designated as Severe Weather Awareness Week. And whereas April 16th, 2022, has been designated as a day to promote storm spotter training. And whereas Lancaster County desires to join the city of Lincoln, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management, and the National Weather Service in promoting severe weather awareness, now therefore be it resolved by the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners that March 21st through the 25th, 2022, is hereby recognized as Severe Awareness Week. Be it further resolved that April 16th, 2022, is hereby recognized as Storm Spotter Appreciation Day. And the Board encourages all persons, organizations, and governmental entities in our community that support activities promoting severe weather awareness and related virtual training events. And be it further resolved that the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners recognizes the commitment of all storm spotters and expresses sincere appreciation to them for their hours of dedicated service.
Do we have a motion in a second? All right. Are we ready for roll call?
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4C is acceptance of grant funds from the Lincoln Community Foundation to Lancaster County Emergency Management in amount of $6,800 to support weather radios and the purchase of public outreach and education materials for emergency preparedness.
Good morning. Jim David, Sabre Director, Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. Michelle Polk from the Lincoln Community Foundation reached out to me a few weeks ago. They had some funds available promoting emergency preparedness. Couple of the different nonprofits that they worked with in the past are no longer in business. So, the funds had sat there for a few years, and when Michelle reached out to me, she was looking for some suggestions, and I was able to give her those. Most notably was weather alert radios, a simple component that even in our high-tech world, the radio, it's a radio that works every time. It has a dedicated power cord with battery backup. They're reasonably priced at about $30 apiece, but that can still be out of the reach of some needy Lancaster County residents. So, my plan was to purchase 100 radios and then work with our community partners through the Health Department, through the school system, through the other nonprofits and community partners we work with on a regular basis to identify 100 needy families to distribute those radios. And hopefully, this will just be the first of many opportunities that we have to do that. The funding from this grant also allows me to purchase some outreach and education materials, not just for kids, but for adults as well. This time of year, we normally have the severe weather awareness, not only the spotter training, but the Central Plains Severe Weather Symposium, which again has been canceled every year since 2019. It's set for this year, but not until October. So, that will give us an opportunity to restock our shelves, so to speak. But as I said, hopefully, this will be the first year of an ongoing relationship with the Community Foundation to promote items like this.
Krista?
Have you considered translating some of these outreach materials into other languages? One of the things that I've heard from immigrant refugee families is that they don't know what the siren means, or they don't know what to do to take shelter.
Correct. And these radios are available in different languages. The other thing about it is it's a tone alert. So, regardless of your language, or even if you're visually impaired, if you hear that audible tone, you know to check whatever source that you have. And that's the same thing with the outreach material that we have. With the ease of translation services, we can take the basic information and hopefully translate that into the languages that we've identified most in need.
Great. Good question. All right. If not, we'll accept a motion.
I move that we accept the grant funds.
Second. All right. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
D is in agreement with Jackson Lewis PC to provide professional legal services for the benefit of Lancaster County.
Move approval?
Second.
Do you want to provide comment? No? No? Okay. Okay. All right. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is in agreement with the Indian Center, Inc., for the county to help fund a housing needs assessment-based community action plan and community service portal.
Good morning. Kim Etherington, Director, Lancaster County Community Corrections. This was the match funding that was approved end of last year, I think, to complement the ARPA project we have going on at the Indian Center with the Transitional Living Housing Project. So, I move approval.
Second.
Appreciate the partnership with the Indian Center and the opportunity to help them as they transition into a bigger, better, and stronger agency. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
4F are contracts with the following to provide the annual supply of turf fertilizer and chemicals. This includes Site One Landscape Supply and Van Diesel, or excuse me, Van Deest Supply Company.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So, this is for our construction sites and places where we need to either fertilize just the seed a little bit to get it growing, and also for our herbicides. And so, I want to note that these contracts are a 300% increase over the previous contract.
Move approval.
Second.
So, we certainly will see these adjustments in next year's budget. Correct, Commissioner Shor. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is recommendation from the purchasing agent and county engineer to award a bid to JJK Construction LLC for repair of County Bridge M147. Estimated cost of county is $159,592.62.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. The map that I have placed on the overhead is for Bridge M147. This is a redecking project. We're hoping to extend the life of this bridge by 20, 25 years with this project.
Move approval.
Second.
Can you just give us the cross streets? That map's a little small from here.
You know, I struggle with the maps, because if I make it big enough so we can get the perspective of where it's at in the county, then it's small enough that it's difficult to tell. So, it is just north of O Street on Southwest 84th Street.
All right. Is there a motion?
We had a motion. I think it.
Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. H is recommendation from purchasing agent and county engineer to award and execute a purchase order to try and metals for sheet steel piling bridge steel. The total amount of the order is $77,662.50.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. This is for repair of our bridge abutments. We often use this steel sheeting to stabilize the abutments. I will also note that just from our estimate from last fall to construct this project, that this price is up 50%.
Move approval.
Second. Additional questions? Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number five is legislative update.
I do not believe we have any items for discussion.
Next is public comment, those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing no one coming forward, could you continue with the announcements, please?
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, March 17th, 2022, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022, regarding Tax Amendment 21011. Amend Article 2 definitions, Article 4 AG Agricultural, Article 5 AGR Agricultural Residential, Article 6 Residential, Article 7 Business, Article 13 Special Permits, and Article 17 Additional Height and Area Regulations of Lancaster Zoning Regulations by restructuring Article 13 and reforming, reformatting the zoning code. County Commissioners can reach out 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV, YouTube, Roku, and Apple TV.
There are motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum? Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. We have adjourned the county board weekly meeting, and will now call to order the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from the county clerk's staff. Printing options are available upon request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda number one or minutes, approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022.
Move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve the minutes. Call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shor?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is appeal of notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. This is for Jay and Phyllis Hanson.
Good morning. Scott Gaines, Deputy Assessor, Registered Needs. Just wanted to give you a little background on this. This is an appeal from values that we brought to you folks a couple of months ago for, it was an outbuilding that was converted to living area several years ago. No permits were taken out, no notification was provided to us. We did the best we could to cobble together the values from those years, 2015 to 2021. This is an appeal of those values. And I do have, we did, there was some confusion on some of the outbuildings. So, I do have some recommended modified values for each of those years. I'm going to read you those values, and then taxpayer can speak to the rest of their appeal. But I do want to get in the record that we are recommending lowering of the values as, I'll spell out here. For 2015, the new recommendation is $176,500. is one hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred. Two thousand sixteen, one hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred. Two thousand seventeen is one hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred. Same value, one eighty-six four hundred for two thousand eighteen. Two thousand nineteen is two hundred five thousand six hundred. To twenty twenty, two hundred fifteen thousand two hundred. Twenty twenty-one, two hundred thirty thousand three hundred. So, those are our modified recommendations of value, uh, based on cleaning up the records. And again, as you try and recreate, uh, seven years into the past, it gets a little difficult. So, those are our updated recommended values. Um, got appraisal staff here if you have any questions related to the value itself. But, uh, with that, I'll, uh, answer any questions.
Those are all lower?
I'm sorry?
Those are all lower than the original?
Correct. Correct.
And, um, you opted to go back to two thousand fifteen for what reason?
Um, well, basically statute, if, if property isn't properly reported to us as required by statute, we can go back as far as, uh, you know, those improvements were made.
Okay. So, that's about the time you estimate that the outbuilding was transitioned into a living unit?
Right. And I, I believe our appraisal staff was out there and visited with taxpayers, and I think that was, uh, that was, we're confident that that's when the transition occurred.
Okay. And you have a copy of those values for clerk's office?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I move approval of the appeal.
I believe, I think they're here.
Okay.
Is there Jay or Phyllis Hanson, or someone wishing to speak on their behalf?
Hi, I'm Phyllis Hanson. This is my husband, Jay Hanson.
And I'm their daughter, Angie Oaklberry. So, um, when my parents bought the property in two thousand fifteen, there was the barn. It's an ag barn on the property. The apartment was already existing. So, the foundation, the electrical, the plumbing, the walls, they did some improvements to dress it up. So, some tile work, some cabinetry, um, all at their own cost. So, they, they built a lot of it by hand. Um, the total expenses of the improvements in the apartment were less than five thousand dollars. And so, there, there wasn't a ton of work done, and they lived in their camper while that was being done on the property. Um, so, yeah, it, we're just a little taken aback by the duration of the, the rears that this has gone back into. Um, we don't protest the new valuations that are provided, but going back seven years at the higher valuations puts a significant burden on them with a fixed income. Um, the tax due would be close to twenty thousand dollars going back to two thousand fifteen. And so, we request that, you know, we accept the new lower valuations for two thousand twenty-one and going forward.
Twenty twenty-one. Okay. All right. Questions? When you purchased the property, the fact that there was an apartment in the barn, was that part of the, the purchase agreement?
Yes, it was. Yeah, it was, I mean, it was rough. By no means, I don't want to imply that it was very high-quality finished apartment, but it had walls, floors, plumbing for the bathroom. The toilet was already there. The shower was already there. The wood stove that was in there was already there. The previous owners, um, did a lot of organic farming on the property, and they would stay out there long weekends. And so, they stayed in the property. The plan was, the original plan was to build a nice home on the property, a nice ranch walkout. Um, but due to financial constraints, that just didn't work out, and so they improved that apartment to make it livable.
We were waiting for another piece of property to sell before we built, and so, we were living in our camper. And then, when, it took longer to sell the property than we had expected. So, we decided just to build it, finish the apartment and live in it. And then, we, and then when the other property did sell, we were happy with where we were living. So, we decided not to build a new home, and, and then medical issues, other things came up. So, um, we're happy staying where we're at. We like it. So.
And how large is, um, the acreage?
Twenty acres.
Twenty acres. And there's no other, no other building on the property?
Uh, we have a hay barn. There's a hay barn there that we've built, and, uh, we started a new building a year ago, and then my husband got hurt. And so, um, part of the pillars are up, but that's all. And then, he did finish one little area on the side of it to put his boat in, so his boat's covered. But that's all. That building, it'll be on hold for a while. So, we were, you know, going back seven years, you know, we knew the value was low on it. We figured the assessors would catch it going forward. We would have to adjust. And this year, they came out and visited with us. So, this is the first contact we've had with them in seven years. So, we were prepared to go forward with the new assessed value. We weren't prepared to go back seven years at a cost of an additional twenty thousand dollars, which we asked the treasurer to figure for us. She did. And it would also be due within two weeks of the time she mails out the bill. So, that's pretty difficult. So, we're asking to adjust the timeframe back.
Can I ask you a question? Um, you said you purchased the property in two thousand fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
And were the improvements on the apartment completed in two thousand fifteen?
No, it took a couple years. She lived in the camper until-
We lived in the camper for a while.
Well, the end of two thousand sixteen. So, they moved into the apartment the end of two thousand sixteen.
Right. About that.
Other questions? Your appraisal staff is here. Can I ask who, who was, um, the one on site that did the evaluation? And I guess, I guess, Scott, it's a general question. Is there any flexibility in, um, not going all the way back?
Um, my name is Tim Seelock. I'm the rural appraiser. Um, a member of our staff was, I believe we were doing general review, was visiting every property in that area when we came across it. And that's just something in our course of work, um, that we come across quite often. Um, some of these buildings are converted. And so, I think Sue was out there, and I, Sue Bartek, and I think she talked to the property owner, and that's where the two thousand fifteen year came from. Um, I think when she made contact with them, it was, uh, it was the two thousand fifteen, I think it was also mentioned that she'd known that the value was low for this whole time. And I think she'd mentioned that maybe she'd talked to her banker, and they said, "We didn't have it listed." And so, it, it's kind of an awkward situation when you go out there and you, you find a house there where they're living in it, and we don't have any record of it. So, the fifteen came from the property owner, as far as I know.
Okay.
And, and just one clarification. I mean, our records show that it was purchased in two thousand fourteen.
Correct. That's what my records show.
Okay. So, two thousand fourteen, not two thousand fifteen. So, that's why the beginning of the, uh, the modification of the value for the re- uh, rehab work was, began in two thousand fifteen.
And that's typical that you take the value when it began rather than when it's complete?
Well, no, we would've, we would've valued it as of January one, two thousand fifteen, for that two thousand fifteen value.
And a lot of times, we are prohibited by statute from making changes. Is this one of those cases?
Absolutely. And, and the, the thought process is, uh, you know, the, the bottom line is that the improvement should have been reported.
Yeah.
Um, you, not saying that they were doing anything to pull the wool over someone's eyes, but the statute's there because it's their responsibility to report these improvements. You don't want someone to go out there, and we've had homes built, you know, substantial homes built, no permit, and they just wait. Yeah, they'll find us eventually. Well, you don't want someone to be able to benefit from that and say, "Oh, well, yeah, the, the house was built ten years ago, but you can only do two years." So, that's why the, the law allows, um, and again, so this was, it was purchased in two thousand fourteen for two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I think our assessment on it had been in the forty thousand, forty, fifty thousand. Um, correct. So, there was-
Okay. All right. Are there any additional questions? If not, is-
One additional comment, if I may. Um, the, the scope of the apartment is nine hundred feet, nine hundred square feet of the whole barn. So, the barn is still a barn, and it's nine hundred square feet within, again, that was originally living space, whether or not it, I don't understand enough how, how those things get declared. But again, some improvements to, to cabinetry and tile work, but no plumbing or electrical or foundation work was done, um, just to make it more comfortable, more than anything. And it's not, not the whole barn by any means, just nine hundred square feet. So.
Is there a motion?
Based upon this additional information and so forth, and knowing that we are bound by statute, I would move to deny the appeal. Oh, excuse me. I would move to, um, yeah, deny the appeal.
Well, that's not, yeah.
I would just modify that to, uh, our recommended, the lower values that we recommended earlier this morning would be-
Okay.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm thinking what you're trying to say, Roman, is that you want to approve the values-
Value changes.
For the years that, uh, that we have, the, the lower values. And I would, I would also add that we'd be happy to go out and, you know, go through it and get a, uh, you know, make sure that our, uh, current listing for twenty-two and forward is accurate, and we'd be happy to go through it and make sure that, uh, you know, we're on the same page. Because again, as you try and retrofit something back into the history, it, it's a little fuzzy, and I think there's even a building out there now that, uh, you know, we've, we've removed because it's kind of stalled in progress. Is that correct? So, we'll, we'll get out there and, uh, make sure that going forward, everything's a hundred percent, uh, transparent for everybody.
And the, uh, and the twenty thousand that was referred to will be less because of the reduced values that you just reported?
Correct. Correct.
All right. So-
Gotcha.
You got the motion now?
Yes, I do have the motion now. I move that we approve the valuation change for property taxation purposes.
I'll second, uh, recommend, the new recommended values.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, call the roll, please.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
We do appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Next is number four, public hearings. This is for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. This includes Lincoln Baptist Church, Goodwill Industries serving Southeast Nebraska, Inc., Bethel Baptist Church, Parkview Christian School.
Okay. We will open the public hearing on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of these applications? Anyone against the applications, or in a neutral position? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Next is number five, action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Is there anyone wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yelkum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that.